Good evening, welcome to tonight's city council meeting. I usually say regularly scheduled, but this was a special date. The reason being was that we were, we thought we might be at the Alabama League of Municipalities State Convention through Monday, which is being held in Birmingham this year. And so, we had very early on in the year when we adopted our meeting schedule, planned for this meeting, to not conflict with that, and moved it to tonight, this Thursday night. So, that's why we're here tonight. So, thank you all for being here. If you'll all please rise with invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight's invocation will be given by Dr. Eric Hankins, the Senior Pastor at First Baptist Church.
Let's pray together. Father, I thank you first of all for leaders who recognize the truth and goodness and beauty of prayer. Leaders that recognize that there are greater realities to which our lives must be directed, that we are not self-created or self-sustaining. We are people who need your help, and we are people who need to look beyond our own interests to the interest of others and to your interests for us. And so, God, in prayer, I ask first of all that you would give them wisdom. God, I recognize in my own small area of responsibility that it's often hard to know what to do. I can't imagine the amount of data and input and opinions that they have to process every day. And so, God, I pray that you would give them minds that are sharp and attuned to what is right, and that you'll help them to know not only how to do it, but how to do it in a way that blesses others and advances the things that are truly good. Lord, I pray that you would give them strength. Again, I can't imagine the challenge and often the burden of leading a whole city of people with all kinds of different points of view about how things ought to be done. God, give them the strength to lead. Give them the strength that's often required to make decisions that aren't going to please everybody, but give them courage as they do that. And then finally, oh God, I pray that you'd give them grace. We don't always get things right. Other people don't always get things right. And so, God, with the humility that comes with the recognition that we are never seeing the whole picture, I pray that they would experience your grace, extend grace to one another, and walk in grace as they lead this fantastic city. Lord, help them even tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, free to the Bible, from the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Dr. Hankins. Okay, first order of business is to amend tonight's agenda. We have two resolutions that we need to add. One will come in at new item number six, which is a site plan review, request of century construction on behalf of Hunt-Hatworth for approval of Eastern Shore Healthcare Advocacy Building located on the east side of Greener Road just south of Gaffer Road at 230 North Greener Road, approved contingent upon conditions recommended by the Planning Commission. The second item would be a resolution that an expenditure not to exceed $10,000 is hereby approved, if necessary, to relocate an additional eight-inch water line on County Road 32 east of State Highway 181 to facilitate the Baldwin County Storm Drain Project. Can I entertain a motion to amend the agenda to add those two resolutions?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Court, on this one, the expenditure $10,000, we will put that at the end. That would be item C-22. Well, there's going to be, everything will be slid down once, twenty items will probably be twenty-three. It'll be after Recreation Board appointments. Thank you, counsel. Next item will be to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, the work session, and the agenda meetings which were held on May the 8th. Counsel, do you have any changes, additions, and deletions to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes as submitted.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes as submitted. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, minutes are approved. Mayor Wilson, your report, please.
Thank you. I wanted to recognize, we have two municipal weeks today. One is Public Works Week, May 21st through 27th. We are still looking for our new Public Works Director and Author Bissarge, who is not here tonight, but he is on a mission trip in Cuba this week, and he does take a mission trip every week, every year. He is our Assistant Public Works Director, and he and the Public Works team are doing an amazing job. Author, let's see, it's going to be, well, I have a proclamation, but since he's not here, I'll give it to him later and take a picture with him. The other proclamation is for Police Week, and that is actually this week. And Chief, if you can, I will come down there to... It is National Public Works Week again. That was a little different. And this is actually going to be, it's a national, and this is going to be sent out to, and home with a bunch of other cities all over the country, NBC. This proclamation is National Police Week, whereas each loss of a law enforcement officer is heartbreaking, and losing over 143 officers in our nation in 2016 is a cry for peace and a signal to all to pray for our men and women in the U.S. who protect communities each day. And whereas the Fairhope Police Department officers bravely and selflessly risk their lives every day to protect our families, visitors, businesses, and whereas the Fairhope Police Department officers do not hesitate to risk their own lives in order to save the lives of others, their commitment to the continued training, skill enhancement, and working with our citizens to achieve peace, make them idle members of our community, and we thank you to all the officers for keeping us safe. And lastly, I've been looking at ways to distribute information to citizens about the work that we do every day, and also to counsel who have busy lives, and sometimes we're unable to connect prior to these meetings. And usually, the meetings are, a lot of times, not enough time to discuss all the updates. We are launching a blog for now, which will be incorporated into our new city website that we hope to have up soon, but the blog will go up next week as a standalone, and again, will be incorporated into the city website when it goes up. And it will just be, hopefully, updated almost on a daily basis, just to show you what's going on within the city and keep you posted on things. Obviously, you won't have to have a Facebook or social media, it will just be part of the website. So, thank you, and that's it.
Thank you, Mayor Wilson. We'll now open the floor to public participation. If you want to speak on any of the agenda items six through the 23 now, now, five is a public hearing, you'll have an opportunity to speak during that public hearing, but if you want to speak to agenda items six through 23, if you'll come forward to the podium and state your name and address clearly for the record.
Was that the public hearing, too, meeting?
No, public hearing will be, you'll have an opportunity to speak to item five. Anybody, agenda items six through 23. Okay, I'll close public participation for agenda items, and if you have anything else to bring forth before the council, we'll have another opportunity at the end of tonight's meeting. I'll open the floor to council comments. Councilman Robinson.
I don't have much to say. It was a great couple of weeks in Fairhope. I don't want to steal any of Jimmy's thunder, because I know he's going to probably talk about it, but I did go, I did take my family, and we checked out The Little Mermaid on the Bluff, and it was, for the time I sat down from chasing children back and forth to the bathroom, it was wonderful. So, they do a great job, it was a great production, and they should be very proud of it. And with that said, that's all I've got.
Councilman Donors.
All right, that is what I was going to talk about tonight. I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to watch The Little Mermaid, the Eastern Shore Repertory Theater's performance, On the Bluff. They had three shows, I think they had over 1,000 people for every show individually, so they had a huge turnout. The weather was fantastic, minus the one day they had to reschedule Friday night for Sunday. And, of course, I love the fact that my wife and my daughters were in it, but really, hats off to Aaron Langley, David Scott, and the rest of the production team, and the, just the talented actors and actresses that participated. They just did a phenomenal job. And I've got to say that the highlight of the whole weekend to me was, was probably, ironically, when the power went out and they lost their lighting, and it was probably during their largest number, and they had a stage full of kids, and they didn't miss a beat. They just kept going, they went through their song dance, they had people doing back handsprings and backflips onstage with no lights at all, and they just went straight through without stopping to pause for a second, and it just felt like that was a testament to how well they've been coached and trained by Aaron, and it was really just a phenomenal experience and magical moment, if you will. Two other things, school lets out next week, so be a lot of kids around this summer, and Memorial Weekend, Baldwin Pops on the Bluff, come check them out on Memorial Day. That's it.
Councilman Brown.
Thank you. Yeah, and back to the ESRT on the Bluff. If you haven't been to a production on the Bluff, I highly encourage it. It's truly an asset for the community. I want to thank the Fairhope Rotary Club for having a steak cook-off Friday night. It was a great event. Congratulations to Chive Talking for being the grand champion, and congrats to the 2017 class of Fairhope. Good luck in your future, and I hope God steers you where you need to be, and I just wish everybody a happy Memorial Day.
Thank you, counsel. Oh, I thought they were going to get to me and let me say something that hadn't been said, but Robert had to, had to talk about the steak cook-off, which was, I want to congratulate all the Rotarians on a job well done, and if you don't know who Chive Talking is that won the whole thing, that was Robert's team, so I think that there might have been a little inside cooking there, I don't know. That's his wife's business, congratulations. And also, the Sunset Rotary Club for winning People's Choice Award for whatever, however many years they've had it now, probably seven years in a row, congratulations to them as well. With that, I'll close council comments, and we will move to the public hearing. This is an ordinance to amend our zoning ordinance, which is number 1253, a request to rezone the property of Burgess A. Thomason Jr. from R1 Low Density Single Family Residential District to a PUD, a Planned Unit Development. The property is generally located on the west side of Adams Street to just south of Lead Yard Street in Fairhope, Alabama, and you can read those parcel numbers, counsel. Can I have one, someone introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay. Mr. Dias.
Thank you. As you mentioned earlier, this is a rezoning to a PUD from R1. The applicant's Larry Chason. The property consists of 53.94 acres. They're requesting 77 lots. In your packet, you'll see some of the standards that they have proposed in the ordinance for their PUD. Any standards that aren't included in here, we'll go back to the regular zoning ordinance. So, if there's something they haven't covered, we'll refer back to the normal zoning ordinance if there's any issue with that, and that will be applicable. The Planning Commission met and approved, recommended approval of this PUD. They did note six recommendations in there. First one is the buffer shown on the plan shall remain natural with the exception of the allowances of plant materials to be installed where a visual buffer does not exist. As you may know, this is a fairly heavily wooded piece of property, so there are many buffers they're leaving which would remain in their natural state. In the event there's not enough buffering, they will install those. Number two is where a visual buffer does not exist, where buffers are shown on the plans, buffer plant material shall be installed. Number three, any outside agency permits required shall be obtained. Any, number four, any item not specifically outlined in the PUD ordinance shall meet all city regulations and ordinances that govern development. Number five, the city attorney shall review the conservation easement to assure it's kept in perpetuity as a park. And number six is the hammerhead shall be adequate to accommodate excess of all service trucks of the property. And again, staff concurs with the recommendation of the Planning Commission and recommend approval.
Counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Dias? I have one. What do you think the, it says number five, the conservation easement will be reviewed to assure it is kept in perpetuity as a park. Is that something that can actually be used as a park? I mean, it's a pretty steep slope there in the wetlands, and I kind of harped on this since the time I've been on the council, and is that, you know, in all of our plans, we, you know, we like to see green space and things such as that, and, you know, it always seems that developers take the part of their land that they can't really do anything with, and they call that the park, or the green space, or the this, or the that, and I don't know, it just seems to me like we keep turning a blind eye. They could have developed that if they want to, and then they call it a park.
And Councilman, I totally agree with you. This, this property has, if you see the site plan, there's many buffers that go around the property. I would recommend that number five be removed from any recommendations, because you're right. It is, the piece of property that's in question has numerous trails going through it, that's part of their plan, their development proposal, and their, kind of their marketing includes, again, many, many areas that would be used by the neighborhood, and I would recommend, again, that we remove number five for any consideration.
And I wasn't recommending, saying that we should, but I mean, since it brought that up, since you brought that up, that's good that I prompted that, but that wasn't my intent to do that.
Well, if they're willing to put it in a conservation easement, why would we recommend removing that from the...
Well, I think when you get into that issue, there's, there's many moving parts to that, which I think could, could be held away from, you know, the city business of that end of it. With the PUD, as you know, the, the site plan governs, if it's shown on the site plan to be a park or an open space, that will govern, that cannot be changed. So, there's, from, from the city standpoint, they couldn't go into any areas that they're showing, assuming this is approved. They can't go into any areas showing where there's a park or open space and develop that. They would have to come back, if they wanted to do that, there's an opportunity to come back to the council and have that approved. That's probably a rare thing to do, but the site plan of the PUD will govern the development, the lots, the layout, the design. The PUD ordinance does allow some slight changes administratively. Those are very rare, and they're kind of defined what those are. It's really in situations where you have some issues maybe with topography or some things like that, but it's a very rare change. So, from that perspective, I don't think there's been any difference to us as, as it develops, whether, however, it's, it's kept.
Do you recommend changing the name of that to something else? I mean, such as...
No, sir, I really don't, because I think the site plan does govern, and I think that's the main thing that we're concerned about, is the open space. I think they're preserving 55% of the site as open space. That's a significant amount of open space. So, from that perspective, I don't, I don't think it's necessary to really address that, because it's already addressed in the site plan.
And I do see in some of those along the streets seen there, there are other green areas and parks. I don't need to beat up on them. I just, I notice when you, but when we brag on these large chunks of land, and we call them...
Right.
...amenities, yes, they are, but they are almost out of necessity.
Right, and Councilman, just, you know, from, and I came in kind of the last part of this process with this particular development, but in talking to the staff and reading some of the minutes, they have taken a great deal of effort to meet with, I think, the surrounding neighborhood and have kind of revised their plans over time. This is all single-family, 77 lots, and I think a lot of the area that's shown on their site plan, if you look at it, it's a usable space, it's an open space, it can be traversed, it can be utilized with trails, and it's not just what I would consider throwaway land, it's not that at all. It's usable property they're setting aside as open space. And the applicant's here, too, he could elaborate more on some of their plans and how they see that property, you know, the open space being utilized, and how it fits into the neighborhood scheme that they're developing here.
Any other questions?
No, I got a comment, you know, for our meeting earlier this week, Wayne, I hate to see, you know, rezoning something R1 to a PUD just from a density standpoint, but...
I think the density here is 1.4 per acre for the proposal, I believe. I may be a little bit off of that, so it's not a huge increase in density. It's very, in my mind, it's very moderate compared to some of the other options they could have chosen or requested, I guess. They are utilizing a cluster sort of development, so you're seeing little smaller lots in exchange with more, for more open space. I think that has some merit to it. If you notice, there's a 40-foot buffer along 98. There's also a couple of areas where there's a 10-foot buffer between, and even more, between any buildings and the adjacent properties, which I think they've taken great care to try to buffer themselves from any kind of adverse impact that may be created. Again, it's single-family, the area, they're proposing single-family, the other areas out there are single-family. So, from the use standpoint, I think it's compatible with the surrounding properties.
Not any more questions from the council. We'll open up the public hearing. If you'd like to speak to this site, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. Stephen Pumphrey with Newberry Preble Risk, and I represent the applicant. I thought I might come on up first and...
Yes, absolutely.
And do that in case it helps to answer some questions before they're asked. And I'll try not to repeat all that Wayne just told you, but I will emphasize some of the things that he was mentioning that I think are important. He did mention the fact that the applicant has met with adjacent property owners, not to say that all adjacent property owners are happy, but a lot of effort was put in to meet with adjacent property owners and staff, and went through many plans. And the plan that you have is the plan that's kind of the culmination from that effort. As you can see, there are a lot of unopened right-ofways throughout this area. There are existing 17 lots, but a lot of unopened right-ofways, and the residents were very adamant, as I recall, about leaving those right-ofways unopened. So, we created a roadway interior to our development. The only one that is open is our access from Highway 98, and then we created our own roadway, and then everything turns into that. It's true that we have gone to smaller lots, but we, you know, PUDs are a difficult thing for everybody to understand, but the trade-off with what we're proposing is that we are proposing 77 lots, but we're also putting up a lot of open space. Mr. Chairman, you're right about the, the 18 acres that's basically to the south, has tremendous grades on it. Obviously, we can't develop it, so we had to leave it into something that conservation is for that. And if that were all that we were leaving, I would agree with you that I'd have a hard time standing here and arguing with you about it. But we have other parks, and you mentioned that. There are the parks within the development, a lot of buffer areas that are developable portions of the property that could be developed if we just stay with R1. I won't tell you that I could get 77 lots, but we've laid out a plan, we could get close to 70. We just wouldn't have all the open spaces, that we would be using the open space, and we probably would be asking you to open up these right-ofways, which the neighbors don't want. So, that, I guess what I'm saying is, we've done through a lot of effort to get to what we have, it's not just something we came up with at the last minute and said, hey, this is what we want to do. So, a lot of buffering around this. This, I don't get many projects, I can tell you, I've been doing this for a long time, I don't get many projects that get a, a project that's loaded with trees and, and, you know, people usually come up to me with farmland, and you divide it up into as many lots as you can get, the person buys a lot, he's getting a piece of pasture that he can obviously put a house on and put his own tree. This site is heavily wooded, which is going to add to the buffering that we have around the project. We put 40-foot buffers in some places, but that's just a line on the paper. You can see that there's even a larger area between Highway 98, for instance, and the back of the lots that we've added. So, all that's wooded will remain that way. We feel like that we've proposed something to you that, that, again, is somewhat a trade-out. Smaller lots, but at the same time, a lot of open space. We, at the Planning Commission, the comments that were made there are comments that I don't know that the applicant, he's here, he can address that, but I don't think there were anything in those comments that, that bothered us. We understand about the buffering needs to be vegetated, and I think most of them are, but if there weren't, then yes, they will be approved. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. There's a lot of details here in the, in the staff report that you already have that I'll be glad to go over as much of it you need, but it was already mentioned about the density. I think it's important to recognize, at the end of the day, it's 1.4 units per acre. That's, that's very low, you know, in, in density. So, any questions for me? And as I said, the applicant's here, and he'll probably be willing to come up if there are other comments that the public may have that we need to address.
Questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Hearing is open to the public.
Diane Thomas, 23389 Main Street. I'm really here tonight for Debbie Quinn, and I represent the neighbors. And I wanted to, I thanked Mr. Chason and the company that he had used when I came before the Planning Commission. This really was a back and forth. The first plan they presented had an office complex, an apartment complex, and single-family homes, and it took up the whole thing, and we almost died. And it opened up all the streets into Scenic 98, and we went back and we worked with them, and I think this was a third plan. And I can say why, while most of, some of my neighbors would like to see it remain undeveloped forever, that is not realistic. This family has this piece of property, they want to sell it, we understand that. We are very pleased with this plan. There are three things. One is there's only one entrance, and that's onto Business 98. That was important to us. The through streets, we have been assured, will not be opened, and if y'all have ever been down Taylor or Gable, those are narrow, one-lane roads. I mean, if you, if you're passing a car, you have to pull over to the side, and they're gorgeous old 100, 200-year oak trees. So, we did not want a lot of through traffic from Business 98 suddenly dumped onto Scenic 98. But I think the most important thing for us was the open space, and about half of this piece of property is going to be reserved as open space, and that is on the south end. If y'all have ever walked it, you can go down Second Street and Montrose, it's beautiful, there are gullies, and, and the creek's down there. So, we feel like this gives the best opportunity to protect that area from further erosion and to protect the creek. So, I'm here to say that, that, I can't speak for all the neighbors, I can speak for Debbie Quinn, and I can speak for myself and a few others. We think it's really the best compromise that we could have gotten.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Larry Chason, and I really, sitting here listening, a lot of what's important to communicate to the city, I think has already been said. I do want to say that, you know, this is my 40th year in the real estate business, and I've done quite a few subdivisions on the Eastern Shore. And, you know, and when we got into this project, there's always a couple of things you hope you see, and, and one of the things I saw early on here is that the Thomasons are very, very nice people, very cooperative. They did not want to do anything that would disrupt the neighborhood. They've owned this property for close to 30 years. The people that will be selling it, in some cases, it's their grandmothers originally purchased the property. They had many opportunities to do things with it many years ago and, and did not desire to do so. But time goes on, things change, families grow, people move away, and it's just come time that they need to do something with the property. You heard a little bit about how we got here. We did submit about three plans. We did, I mean, logically, looking at all that frontage, or if a half a mile of frontage on Highway 98 in the beginning, we thought there might be some, some commercial uses that would be acceptable. We found out rather quickly that those were not going to be desired, so we backed up, we met with the neighbors, and I really do appreciate, not only the Thomasons, but the people... the people that live in the neighborhood that, you know, understood that we're making a change to put something in that'll be a credit to the city and a development. We have received a lot of interest in this, in that, as Steve said, you know, today's tract development in open fields is a lot different than developing a piece of wooded property that has beautiful live oaks and trees. And, you know, if we had attempted or tried to attempt to sell or develop this property as R1 zone, you would have seen most of those trees come down. It would have happened, and this way, we'll be not having to do that. I will say that even though there are some, some of the topographic issues that you see were caused by erosion from other developments many, many years ago, prior to any kind of stormwater requirements, and a lot of those gullies are there as a result of runoff from other developments, and that actually, the development of this property is going to aid in that, in intercepting some of that water that's trying to rush off of those developments to Fly Creek, I mean, to Rock Creek. And so there should be an improvement to the, you know, to Rock Creek as a matter of this development. I'll also say that that open space, I can speak for, I think, the families that'll live there. I can tell you that we see that area along Rock Creek as being a tremendous amenity in its natural state. I think, I've walked the whole piece of property. It's absolutely beautiful down there, near the creek. There's not a child in the world that wouldn't enjoy having that much land available to go back in the woods and play, and we will be, you know, we are not going to be the developers of the property, but we wanted to go this PUD route because we wanted to be upfront about what we expect to see there and sit and work with the developers in putting together something that, quite frankly, is not a part of what we have been seeing in the past few years with tract development. This is more of a custom-type thing. This is taking and going back to the way that we did things when you wouldn't even consider developing a residential subdivision without adequate tree cover. So there'll be a lot of character to this neighborhood. As I said, we're utilizing some existing access there where there's already a traffic signal. There'll have to be modifications to that traffic signal, some decel lanes, some different turn lanes, things like that. But this is going to be a very attractive development. It's going to be very different from a lot of what you're seeing. The trade-off, if you want to call it a trade-off, but a lot of the interest that I've received has to do with people who would like to downsize from an acre, two-acre Montrose typical lot and come down to something that's smaller, more manageable, and still, even our smallest lots will accommodate over 2,500 square feet. Some of these lots will take up to 3,500 square-foot single-story structures. And of course, with multiple-story structures, some of these houses could go 3,000, 4,000 square feet. I heard from time to time some concerns about, you know, the pricing. This will be an upper-end development. The way it's designed, this is not a patio home-type development, this is not a lower-end development. This is going to be in competition with the areas in Point Clear in here that vie for the larger custom homes. So it will be a very nice development, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel?
Mr. Chason, and this may be, you know, for the owners, what's their fault? Mr. Dias had recommended us removing the recommendation five, which was to review the conservation easement to assure it is kept in perpetuity as a park.
Right. I'm glad you brought that up, because I meant to address that. One of the advantages to the family for putting this in the conservation easement, obviously, is a tax deduction. They would like to get something out of that roughly 20-something acres of land that is going to be left as it is, and the conservation easement provides that vehicle. I mean, this whole concept is sort of a smart-growth concept, to concentrate your development in one area and leave this open space. And I have spoken with Weeks Bay Foundation personally, because we aren't at a point where we can tell you exactly who's developing it and what kind of restrictive covenants and POA, and, you know, all of those are yet to come. But there are some pretty strict guidelines about how you can qualify for a conservation easement, and if it's a requirement of the approval, that makes it a lot more difficult for them to do. We never suggested a city park. We would have cooperated with the city had they said they wanted to do something with it, but personally, the people most affected by all that open space are going to be the people that live there. And so the fact that it's being put into the conservation easement to ensure a buyer in this neighborhood or anybody else that it will never be developed is the goal. How we get there, whether or not it's, you know, controlled by the residents of these 77 lots, or whether it's some other entity, but Weeks Bay has expressed an interest in sitting down with us if we get past this step and talking about putting it in a perpetual easement so that it, we can ensure that it not be developed.
So I'm a little confused. At first, it sounded like you were arguing that to put it in an easement. Now, I'm not sure.
No, we, once you put it in a conservation easement, it's done.
Can the residents use that property, though? As you said, the kids, who wouldn't want to run around on all that land? And I agree with that comment.
Can they use it? Yes, sir, they can use it. Yes, sir. Weeks Bay has quite a few conservation easements. That's really their purpose, is to ensure that the property be available. I mean, when they put property in conservation easements, they don't put up no trespassing signs. I mean, they...
You just can't build on it, right?
Right. It can't be developed.
That gets back to my comment earlier. I said, if they're willing to put it in one, why would we want to take that away from them? I mean, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, I don't care what you do with your tax credits, it's your personal business, I guess. Okay. I had one more question. Mr. Dias added another question for you, since to say it's a hot-button issue would be the understatement of the millennia. Stormwater management, and it states in here that this would be subject to LID techniques. Are they going to be able to fulfill enough LID techniques to qualify to be low-impact design?
The next process, if this is approved tonight, the next process will be preliminary plat stage, and during that preliminary plat stage, we will look at LID requirements. Now, again, the LID requirements are based on the physical characteristics of the land. Some of those, there are some properties we've come across who can't do some of the LID requirements because of the topography or maybe the soil types, what have you. But we will review those and encourage as many of those LID requirements as we can. Ultimately, what we find is a lot of those LID requirements, they're asking for waivers from.
Right.
When the topography of the land doesn't fit the particular LID requirement.
Right. To be like LID-qualified, I think we say something like you have to meet 10 out of 15.
Right.
When in some projects, it's physically impossible to meet 10 out of 15. You may only be able to meet eight out of those 15, and so if you, I was just making sure the language, if you're required to be LID-qualified, but you couldn't meet the 10 out of 15, would you still be LID-qualified?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Eight out of 15.
Right.
And don't want to hamstring them.
Right. And what would happen during the preliminary stage process, their engineer would likely ask for a waiver for those, and they would explain why they can't meet those particular requirements of the LID. That's how it's typically going. But that would be looked at and reviewed and enforced at the preliminary plat stage, and then obviously, the final plat would give them the ability to start selling lots after that. So there's, so the stormwater and all those kinds of things will be looked at more technically at the next stage of the development process.
Thank you, Wayne. Any other questions? Any questions from any Chason? Any questions for Mr. Chason?
I did commute from Albuquerque, New Mexico today to get here today. Okay. Public hearing is still open? Oh, go ahead.
I just want to say that it has been a long effort to get where we are, but I believe that this is the way the process should work, and I just want to thank everybody for working with us. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. And Mr. Chason, and we have never spoken about this project ever, but I will say that the residents out there that do pick up the phone call and do call council members and talk have stated on every occasion that you have made every attempt to sit down and talk with them, so.
That's important. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Public hearing is still open. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I will close public hearing. Counsel, unless you make a motion for, to suspend with the rules and vote on immediate consideration, this will lay over for two weeks. Or until the next council meeting, I should say. It's been a little more than two weeks.
It's about four weeks.
It's a good ways off.
I'd make a motion to suspend with the normal rules in that case. It's a long ways off.
Have a motion to suspend with the rules. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a late second. Okay.
Going once.
I have a motion and a second to suspend with the rules. Any discussion? I don't see any dissent on this project, but I still, this is, you know, something that's been in the works for a while, and I didn't really want to rush it, but, in my comments. Okay, we have a motion and a second to vote for immediate consideration. All those in favor, our clerk, do you need the roll call that?
Yes. Council President?
Nay.
No need to call anymore. That's to be unanimous.
Okay, has to be unanimous. It'll lay over, I'm sorry.
No worries.
Next item was an item that was added to the agenda. This is the site plan review at request of century construction on behalf of Hunt-Hatworth for approval of Eastern Shore Healthcare Advocacy Building, located on the east side of Greeno Road, just south of Gayford, at 230 North Greeno Road, in approved contingent upon conditions recommended by the Planning Commission. Council members, do you all have this in your package? You should have this. Wayne?
Thank you, Councilman. Again, this is a site plan approval. This is located in the Greeno Professional Village PUD, which was approved, I believe, in 2002 by ordinance number 1142. They're requesting to construct a 5,400-square-foot medical building in this PUD. It has been reviewed by the planning staff and reviewed by the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval. Some of the conditions they mentioned in their approval are things that were already being enforced. They mentioned in number two, the lighting, and the lighting is no more than eight feet tall, and that's per the PUD ordinance from 2002. And also the signage, and that will, again, be reviewed against the PUD and also the sign ordinance that we have for the city. There was a question about medical waste that is being handled as normal with an outside agency that comes and picks up the medical wastes from the facilities. That's also been addressed during the hearing with the Planning Commission. Again, this has been reviewed and recommended by the Planning Commission, and the staff concurs with their recommendation.
Any questions for Mr. Dias? Somebody like to make a motion to approve the site plan?
Make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the site plan. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, site plan is approved. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a resolution accepting all of Fairhope's public utilities located in the right-of-ways within Red Barn Road Estates for maintenance and to authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and Red Barn Road Properties LLC. Counsel, would somebody like to entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept all the public utilities. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, counsel. Next item is a resolution accepting all of Fairhope's public utilities located on the right-of-ways within South Point at Fairhope for maintenance and to authorize Mayor Karen Wilson to execute the maintenance and guarantee agreement between the City of Fairhope and Macklemurray Homes Incorporated. May I entertain a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept those utilities. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you, counsel. Next item is the resolution that Mayor, I'm tired, folks. Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a contract with Kavanaugh-McDonald Consulting for RFQ number PS027-17, professional consulting, to prepare an actuarial valuation of the city's OPEB liability for fiscal year ending 9/30/16 with a not-to-exceed value of $8,000. entertain a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item number nine is a resolution that the city council approves the selection of international code council to perform construction plan review of the First Baptist Church Children's Building Project for the Building Department, and hereby authorizes Mayor Karen Wilson to establish a fee schedule and an established and not-to-exceed limit of $9,000 and to execute the associated contract. Somebody like to entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, counsel. Next item on tonight's agenda is a resolution to purchase one 2017 Ford F-250 crew cab pickup truck for the Water Department. This type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department purchasing bid list, therefore, it does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is $27,556. Entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to purchase the pickup. Any final discussion? Good price.
Get two.
I'll take two of them. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. Next item, if you're following along, it says 11 on the sheet. It's item 11, resolution to purchase three pickup trucks for the Building Department. The type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama Department of Transportation surplus equipment list. The total cost is not to exceed $47,300. entertain a motion to purchase these pickups?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to purchase the three pickups. Any final discussion? I will just point out that these are three used pickups. 2013 models, pretty low mileage.
Looked like a pretty good price for three.
Good price for three. Okay, any final discussion? We do have a motion and a second, don't we, Clark?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Hearing no final discussion. All those in favor of the purchase, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Next item is a resolution that Mayor Karen Wilson is hereby authorized to execute a reimbursable agreement for relocation of the utility facilities for County Project ERPR-8980. County number 0215914 between the City of Fairhope and the Baldwin County Commission on five sites regarding water lines with the proposed location remaining the same and water line being lowered so as not to be in conflict with the drainage structure. The total estimated reimbursable cost is $34,395.80. Entertain a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion?
I'll just say that I appreciate Dan going through that timeline with us during the work session, and giving us a background on this.
Appreciate that. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of authorizing a mayor to execute the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Thank you. Next item is a resolution to purchase two 2017 Ford F-250 crew cab, three-quarter-ton pickup trucks for the Public Works Department, and the type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List, therefore, it does not have to be let out for bid. The total cost is $55,112. Entertain a motion to purchase these two pickups?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any final discussion?
Yes.
All right.
Council President, counsel, mayor. On that particular line item, there's two corrections I'd like to make. We will change the word from crew cab to super cab. That's just making them extended cabs instead of four-door models, and the price will drop from 55,112 to 50,730.
Mr. Ames?
That's it, sir.
Okay, was somebody, will just withdraw the motion?
Yeah, withdraw the motion.
Okay, you want to make a new motion to approve the purchase of two super cabs with total price of 50,730?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchases are approved, thank you, counsel. Item 14 is a resolution to the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a Sunbelt Fire QAC-10 Quick Attack Vehicle mounted on a Ford F-550 4x4 four-door chassis for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department in the amount of $166,325 plus freight. Requested item is available for direct procurement through the Houston-Gowston Area Council Contract, therefore does not have to be let out for bid. It's already been nationally bid through the HDAC's bid process. Entertain a motion for the purchase of this quick attack vehicle. This is not an armored vehicle. It's, you know, got a 50-cal mounted to it. It is, it is just a quick attack fire truck to get in smaller spaces quicker and more efficiently. Is that right?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, thank you, counsel. Item 15 on the sheet is a resolution to purchase two gang-operated air brake distribution switches for the Electric Department authorized procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. The cost will be, the cost will be $12,953.90. Entertain a motion to make this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Why do they have to be gang-operated? Item number 16 is a resolution to purchase an inmate transport van for the Sanitation Department, and the type of vehicle needed is on the Alabama Department of Transportation Surplus Equipment List. The total cost is $15,050.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. I guess I was just going to make sure, counsel, one of the things I'm going to look for in all these things is that they are budgeted items, and if you look in there at these green sheets, now that we're going through all of these, you'll see that these are all budgeted, and this is, in fact, I believe if I'm reading this correctly, is about $20,000 under budget. Am I reading that right, Deborah? Okay. Bought a used one and saved $20,000 from the budgeted number. Okay. We appreciate you being good stewards of the money. We have a motion and a second, right, clerk?
Yes, you do.
Okay. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the purchase say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Next item is a resolution at the City of Fairhope vote to purchase a John Deere NY17 ProGator 2020A ATV for the Golf Department in the amount of $22,402.36. The vehicle is available for direct procurement through the National Joint Powers Alliance Buying Group. Contract, therefore, does not have to be let out for bid. This has been nationally bid through the NJPA's bid process. May I entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. Next item is a resolution at the City of Fairhope vote to purchase four used single-phase substation transformers for the Electric Department from the Utilities Board of Silicaga at a tested and delivered price of $32,058.39. The procurement of these items is allowed without formal bid by the Code of Alabama. Entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Okay, what did want to point out, counsel, this was not a budgeted item, but definitely a necessary item, so. Have a motion and a second for the purchase, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, purchase is approved. Next item, if you're following along, is number 19. The City of Fairhope vote to purchase a SCADA System Annual Software Maintenance Agreement for the Electric, Water, and Gas Departments from Surveillance Technology as sole source distributor, and authorizes procurement based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama contractual services and purchases of commodities for which there is only one vendor or supplier in contractual services and purchases of personal property which by their very nature are impossible to award by competitive bidding. The cost will be $20,000 even. Will entertain a motion for this purchase?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, counsel, this next item I should have probably brought up in the agenda meeting, but we have people here to speak to it if you need to. Item 20 is a resolution to award the bid for the Fly Creek Seawall Improvements to M.D. Thomas Construction with a bid proposal of $119,290.50. Entertain a motion to award this bid?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any final discussion? Harbor Board happy with that price?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Hearing no other discussion, all those in favor of awarding the bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay. The next item was the other item that was added to the agenda, and I'll just read this. This says, be it resolved by the governing body of the City of Fairhope, Alabama, as follows, that expenditures not to exceed $10,000 is hereby granted, I'm sorry, is hereby approved if necessary to relocate the, an additional eight-inch water line on County Road 32 East of State Highway 181 to facilitate the Baldwin County Storm Drain Project. Entertain a motion to pass this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay, resolution passes. Item 21 are reappointments to the Recreation Board. The reappointments are Derek Thomas and Charlie Langham. The new term shall end April the 20th. Entertain a motion for these appointments?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for the reappointments to the Rec Board. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Okay. Public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, please come forward. State your name and address clearly for the record.
Eric Cortinas, on behalf of the Fairhope Pirate Booster Club, I wanted to make you aware of a couple of things. First, several of you were at, many of you were at the graduation Tuesday night, and it was another wonderful graduation ceremony. Let you know, if you hadn't already heard, this year's senior class received a combined total of $25 million in scholarship offers throughout the class. Wow. And that is the record, as far as I know, that, that any senior class has ever received. So it was an incredible amount, and that's the hard work of those teachers, it's hard work of those students, and all the people that, that are involved in that. Let you know, the women's soccer team made it to the final four. We lost to McGill. Hate losing to McGill, but we lost to McGill in the first, so they made the final four. Virginia Green was the 7A low, low-score medalist for the state. She shot 66 and 66 in her two rounds. She was 15 shots better than the next person.
I'm going to cut it out here.
Yeah.
I want to say something about this young lady. I'm telling you all, this, this lady is the best high school athlete in the state of Alabama.
Yeah.
Hands down. There's not even a close second, in the whole state, the best athlete. What she's doing on the golf course would be equivalent, I would say, of, of somebody running track and breaking 10 seconds in 100 meters. I mean, it's, it's phenomenal.
It is. It's astonishing, and I mean, she, you know, this is-
It's really astonishing.
Three years in a row, she's been the, the low scorer, and I think she had a 60, didn't she shoot a 60?
She shot a 60.
She shot a 61?
She shot two 63s, a 62, and a 61.
Yeah.
And she broke a record that morning before graduation.
She did.
Just early in the morning, and I'm going to graduate tonight.
Yeah, she won the state championship and then drove to graduation.
Yeah. So Vanderbilt is, she, she accepted Vanderbilt's scholarship offer, so she's going to get a great education, get to play golf, and great things in store for her. The ladies softball team is at the state tournament. They lost their first game, I don't know who they played, but they came back, they beat Prattville today. They will play again tomorrow. If you had not seen, I think the last time I saw coming into the regional tournament, their record was like 36, 5, and 1, and they are just, they were pounding people all year. And they're a young team. They had five seniors this year, but they're going to be back, so, you know, cheer for them. They're, they're up to state tournament now, and I think actually tonight was the spring football game down in Spanish Fort. Couldn't be there, but everything's, we're finishing up the school year, getting ready to get ready for the beginning of next year, and looking forward to some great things for the school next year as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
Anything at all? Almost anything at all. Okay, I'll close public participation and ask for-
I'm sorry. I'm just collecting.
Getting slow to up there, TJ.
TJ Murphy, 204 Tensaw Avenue. Want to say, Jack and Karen, I appreciate you guys taking a few moments with me before the meeting to hear my concern, and for public record and for the benefit of the other members of the council, I just want to take a few minutes to restate that. My concern essentially is that we're less than 50 days away from the moratorium being lifted, and as I understand it, some of the objectives of that moratorium were to allow us to see how development will affect our community, to protect the city from developers making a quick buck, review ordinances and regulations, compatibility analysis would be completed, infrastructure studies with traffic schools, drainage, watershed, and protection of downstream property owners, ensure drainage standards are appropriate, examine the need for site-specific standards, ensure the city is protected from unzoned property development outside the city, establish ordinances and regulations to implement